Hello.
All right, I can hear Pat, but I can't make out anything that's being said in the room.
Yeah, I can't either. Can you guys hear us? Hello, can anybody hear us? And it won't let me start the video either.
Is the room muted?
Uh.
That's a little bit better.
Now I hear you.
Yeah, I switched the microphone. It's the wrong one, but I think it's whatever.
You got the right one now.
Do you hear the mayor or do you hear me mostly?
I hear you.
Yeah, I figure. All right, um.
And they got it set to where our video can't come on either. Oh, there it is.
I just made you a co-host. You should be able to present.
Okay. We're having a little.
John, John and Keith when he gets on too?
Uh, John is a co-host as well.
There we go.
There we go.
Roddenhauser, is that Keith?
Keith, yeah, Keith.
All right, promoting him. I think the mics are acting. I'm sorry, I gotta fix that. All right, so the mics are somewhat working, so um, I guess. Feel free to begin while I'm getting that sorted out.
Okay.
Can you hear me at all?
Yes.
I'm actually here, I think.
All right. And I think we have all three. I don't know if you need to enable Keith.
I believe I do.
Okay. All right, so I will go ahead and open up the work session. Thank you for coming. We have our three consultants here from BCI. And the purpose of this evening, it is open to the public. There will not be public comment this evening, though rest is sure. There'll be plenty of opportunity for public comment. We are, the purpose of tonight is for the members of the Board of Trustees to have an opportunity. I know that shared some input over the past number of months and more recently. And so it's an opportunity for questions to be asked, explanations and input to be heard. So I don't know if you want to open up. John, perhaps with just a summary of how you got to here, or if you want to just start it off with the question. We had some discussion at the last board meeting, which I believe you had a chance to listen to.
Right. Keith or John wants to start?
Well, we talked about earlier today that we didn't want to go through each individual question. I don't think there were really any discussion needed on question one.
Keith, Keith, I think wait, let's back up. And I think the mayor wanted us to kind of give a background of why, how, why we're here and how we got here. So.
Oh.
Yeah, because then everybody listening is gonna know all of that.
So we, well, we're on version eight of this survey. But when did we start this process, John? How long has it been? Version one.
Yeah.
From July.
It has been a while.
Yeah, I think one thing I wanted to make sure everybody on the understood that hasn't been involved is that um, you know, we were, we were originally hired to um, or mostly originally hired to look at St. Paul's and then it became important to realize because it's been designated as parkland that it would be helpful to understand what your parks and recreation needs are. So our scope of work then became really focused on creating a master plan for the Recreation and Parks Department, looking at facilities and programs and what kind of needs and wants people have. And on top of that then became the St. Paul's Use Plan that would hopefully be a complement to the Recreation Master Plan. Um, and hopefully be because it's designated as parkland, um, it can be an avenue to implement the goals and objectives of the Recreation Master Plan. And so that's really where we are with the St. Paul's Use Plan and why we're developing this survey. And that's how we got to whatever version it is we're on that Keith was gonna start to uh.
So the first version was actually in May. And part of the reason we have been delayed was that we were waiting for the results of the Recreation Survey. And we have those and we presented those findings about a month ago. And uh, we have taken those findings to to help modify this St. Paul's Survey to incorporate uh what we learned from that survey to get to make the best and most effective survey for St. Paul's. And we're up, yes, we're up to version eight and hopefully version nine will be the last one. Yeah. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, no, I think that's a good kind of background. We did speak a bit today. I don't know that it's necessary to go through each, however, if you want to present or start with the questions, I know um, I'll leave that up to you.
Okay. Um, I think we should just quickly go through each one. Number one, I don't think there's any, any real disagreement here. Um, trustee Maldoon had one change. He wanted to say uh select or all of the above, and that we don't have any problem with that. So I think we're good on that one. On question two, the reason we have this question was really by request of some trustees to try to determine what parts of the building were most important to uh, to residents.
Personally?
Yes.
I don't think question two should be in there at all.
Yeah. We've, we've talked a lot about that. And when, one of the things that we've, you know, we've talked about, and I think we've talked about with all of you is we understand that there's a feeling that there are folks who haven't ever been inside and and don't, don't have any way of knowing what they, what they might like about the inside. Um, and that's okay, because you don't have to answer this question. Um, you could choose none, or you could only choose things that are on the outside. The, the, one of the things that's important for us on this question is, you know, really two things. One, if we get into a situation where we're not gonna have the budget to save everything on the building, then the village is gonna need to know what the priorities are in terms of what to save, and this will help with those priorities. Um, and the other thing is it will help tell that story that may need to be told. If, if so many people want to save all of those things and you're applying for grants and things, particularly historic preservation grants, you're really gonna want to know what are those things that are most important to the city and they can help to the residents and they can help tell you, help you tell that story um, when you get further along in that, in that project. So that's, that's, those are some of the other reasons why we think that question could be useful.
It could show numbers for, to show how, how important these are to residents, specific numbers.
Hey, guys, Benny Maldoon here.
Um, yes.
I agree a hundred percent with what you just said. If the residents in this village knew St. Paul's, the interior of St. Paul's, they'd all been in there, they're familiar with the interior of the building, you know what? And they would be able to answer those questions accurately, and it would help us get accurate information that we could put towards the survey. The reality is the majority of items on number two, most people have no idea. Majority of young people especially have no idea. The older residents of the village definitely would know a little bit more, but the majority of young people, all they know, the majority of young people, they've never been in the building, they drive by the building. Most people thinks it's a pretty magnificent historical building. Some have no ideas, some do, some don't. But my point is, the whole idea of asking questions on this survey, in my view, and it's just my view, is that we get honest, accurate information from our residents that that can tell us exactly how they feel, but it's based on facts. Asking majority of the questions on number two to me is just, it's hypothetical, because the majority of people have never been in the building, and all they know is there's this big brick building called St. Paul's on Stewart Avenue. Got a clock tower, it's brick, pretty cool details on the outside, but most of them, not I wouldn't say most of them, some people know the historical that history of this, of this building, some people don't. I just, I just don't want to ask any questions on a survey that I know the majority of people have no basis to answer those questions. And that's where, when that, the information I sent over to you guys, it was based on that. And I, I think great, ask, ask the right questions that people can answer and help us with this survey. But to me, number two, uh, the majority of people cannot answer any of those questions.
So, and I'll just add one other. Well, um, one other thought I had on, on number two is that we may wind up actually with bad data. Because, you know, ninety-nine point five or ninety-nine point nine percent of the residents have never been in the building, right? There's only a handful who have. And so if I'm thinking of people I know, everyone's heard of the clock tower, or you could see it. No one has a clue about the Great Hall or, um, you know, maybe they know a little bit that there's a chapel there, but they don't know what it looks like. But my point is that people may respond positively that I have the most affinity for the only things I've ever seen, which would be the clock tower and maybe the exterior walls. I don't know if I have affinity for the Great Hall or for the chapel, because I've never seen it. So you may actually wind up with bad data, which concerns me a little bit, because I won't answer to something that I don't know, and I may have chosen them if I had ever seen them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I guess that's what, Sharon, I will just add some of the items, as far as people not knowing, like the stained glass, for instance, which we all voted to spend money, we, it was deteriorating to, maybe not going to be stable, but to safely remove it so it could be restored. I think, um, I think people are familiar, if they have been watching at all, with the stained glass. And that was seen as something that was important to the board, important enough to preserve. So I don't quite agree that people have no idea what's in it. I think there's been a lot of talk about stained glass sharing of the video. Um, we had a renowned expert come in. Um, so I think there has been actually quite a bit of for anyone who's been looking to follow or wants to go online and interested at all in St. Paul's. We do have a lot of information on the chapel, stained glass, similarly the Great Hall's. I believe, I mean, that's what's been highlighted for years and years in campaigns to, to show pictures of what um, St. Paul's could be. I think we're all familiar with those sketches that have been shared, people are passing past or so. I don't, I don't quite agree that no one has any idea about what's inside. I think they don't. That's a shame, right? Because then they can't be attached to it, but it is what it is. I, I don't think we take it out because we don't think they know it well enough.
I mean, the building has been closed, it's not really open to the public. I don't think we can blame the residents for not really seeing these things. I mean, it's different if the building is open and they have the chance to see it. It's another that, you know, it's not really accessible to the public. Um, also, for example, Great Hall's or woodwork, it's very, very general terms. Woodwork on the first floor, second floor, the staircase stuff, what, what, what does it even mean, woodwork? Or the Great Hall, like what, what is it? Like, how big is it? Um, what big of an area? It's just, I, I agree, I think most of the residents, they have not personally seen this. Um, these questions are very, very difficult to answer.
I, I would add that uh, there's some value in what everyone has said here. Uh, Judy, your point about bad day, data is, is a good one. But the stained glass, I don't think is a particularly good example, because we've taken the stained glass out.
Right.
And we can do whatever we want with the stained glass at this point, within reason. I think that if you want to keep this question, it could be pared down. And there could be other general uh descriptions that would allow a person who literally, like um, just as I said, drove by it for the last thirty years. It's been closed since ninety-three, essentially. It's been unused for thirty.
Starting off with the value of questions means that the individual who was answering it understands it. And that we, the people, or whoever is asking the question, puts themselves in that position. There's no definition for affinity, which I have trouble with. Then you have, you only get to ask three. There is no, I don't see, and says, so, you know, up to three options. Where is the option that you want to keep all of it? Oh, by the way, there was one person.
That's number, that's number ten.
The whole building. But does that, does that also include everything on the inside? I mean.
Yeah, I would say.
Okay.
The, the thing, just to clarify what I was saying there, and I, I think just to simplify for public as well. When you drive by St. Paul's, people can accurately tell you what they think. Love the building, don't like the building, they can see the clock tower, I love the clock tower, don't like the clock tower, like the brick, don't like the brick. That's all accurate information, and I have no problem with somebody asking any resident, what do they think of the exterior of St. Paul's? Because I think they can accurately tell you what they think, and that's great, that's accurate information. When it comes to the inside, anything I do with the inside of this building, there is no resident, that, I, there are some residents, a very, very small percentage that have been in there, that have seen that building and have seen it multiple, multiple times. I'm fortunate enough to be one of those people, and I'm also, as most people know by now, I'm in the construction world. So I understand the interior, some of the detail work that's in the interior of that building. In my view, it's spectacular, some of the panel work, the staircase, you know, like the chapel, stuff like that. I can, I can honestly tell you that tonight, because I've been in it, I've seen it, I appreciate that kind of architecture and detail work. So I have a background in it, and I've seen it multiple times, so I can honestly and accurately answer that question. The majority of people, especially the people who have moved into town in the last fifteen years, majority of people have no idea about the interior of St. Paul's unless they've somehow gone on to the websites and looked at some of the videos and followed some of the stuff that's gone on. So that's my point. Outside, what do you think of the exterior of the building? No problem whatsoever, asking those, asking those questions whatsoever. When it comes to the interiors and the detail work, to me, that's, for me, it's a nonstop, because you can't accurately answer that question.
So my question is, if we just limit this to exterior aspects of the building, is, is that acceptable?
Can I just say one thing? And I don't know where, I don't think any of us know where this is leading, but if it is leading to restoration, like real historic preservation inside the building, I think we all know that's more expensive and we want to make sure we have support for that. So I think we may regret having dropped this question. Because I think it could be helpful when we get to decisions, is it gonna be just sheetrock in there, or are we trying to preserve, you know, the, the woodwork, for instance? Do people care about woodwork? Um, the stained glass windows will be expensive to restore and to put back in the original spots or someplace else. We need to hear that people care. So I think it's an opportunity. I don't see us doing another survey. I would to every single household circling back, or I don't think we can count on being able to do that. So I guess we just see it as a missing opportunity. And I would see the advantage to taking it out. It just will help us understand the community better, but.
Maybe what you do is if we come up with a solution for the question, maybe we do an extensive marketing campaign where we make sure that the POAs are putting stuff out, or the Village of Garden City is putting these films that we've created out, just talking and showing the, the school before, as it is now, what has to get done, the windows, and let then people see what we've been lucky enough to see on the inside so that they can judge it from, you know, another's, you know, a camera. I mean, it's just, you know, we could have Carissa, we could have like three weeks of marketing where we put it out with any and every means available.
Interesting. Just a quick question for you, Ben. You've talked about, you know, undoubtedly there's gonna be some significant uh, internal demolition.
Correct.
How, uh, how, depending on, on the direction we go in, in terms of what the building is going to look like, we hope it's gonna look like. So when, when, when you look at uh, issues like woodwork, I mean, if you have to do internal demo and folks say, geez, we want to save woodwork, how realistic is that? How, you know, can you pull the woodwork out and would we reinstall it in, in a new building? So I'm just trying to think of the, the relevance of some of these questions. I, I, I like uh, 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 the idea that Michelle had, but.
Yeah, so that's, that's an easy one relatively to answer. If most people that are in this room are looking on Zoom, have a home, right? And we renovate homes all the time. Looking through the same lens, there are certain things that are well worth saving and you can save, and it's cost effective to save in any restoration, doesn't matter. Okay? And there's other things that make no sense.
Yeah.
Uh, there are a lot of things in St. Paul that should be saved. It doesn't matter what type of project you're gonna do. For historical purposes, um, you name it, whether it's, whether it's panel work, there's a lot of beautiful panel work in the building, the main staircase, tile in that building, there's some extraordinary tile in that building. Some of it you can save, some of it you can't save. That has to be analyzed in a lot more detail. But the answer to your question is simple. You saved materials that are historical and are worth saving and that you can save. The rest of it, for instance, old plaster, old lacquer, old floors that have been all water damaged, those you're not gonna save. But the, the, the really unique historical things within that building, uh, that you can save, you should save. But again, that's the process you go through. Um, but again, and I marry this, I agree with you to, to some degree in what you just said. The problem I have is how does somebody answer hypotheticals if you want to get accurate information? And unless they're in there and they walk in there and we bring the wheel off the public window, which right now is not a thing we can do, how do you answer that? And even off videos, and you're right, there is a lot of videos and a lot of information online, it's, it's really good stuff on the website. Uh, looking at a picture and being there and seeing the panel work is in that building, for instance, it's spectacular, right? Some of the tile work that's in that building, the main staircase. There are a lot of different things that building that are, and then there's a lot of things that are certainly not in really good shape of the last thirty years. Uh, but you have to be there and see them to answer that question accurately. That's all I'm saying, and I leave it at that.
I just, one last before we move on, because I know we're spending a lot of time on this one. If the concern is just they don't know what it looks like. I have been in the building because of the job I have right now, I felt like I should go in. I found it looked exactly like the video I posted. It looked exactly like pictures I took. So I do think if that was really the only concern, we could do a um, slideshow, you know, a quick picture thing, a picture stained glass, a picture grand staircase, a picture of these different items. If that is the concern, that people don't know what we're talking about, there could be a picture of that. Now, does it look great now? I see it could open up a whole can of worms, like, do we want to show the staircase now or what it could look like in the future? It's gonna be what it is now. But if that's really the concern, we could always even have like a QR code here, you know, to the slideshow on what is, what are all these things, one through ten? Here's a picture of, some people may not know that the name of that covered driving entrance or where it is. So I don't know. I know this makes it more complicated, but there's a fixed idea, that's the concern.
Any other comments, uh, John?
Right, the process question. So, John or whoever.
Yeah.
What is the process tonight? Are we just giving our concerns or various questions and we are not making any decisions?
No decision.
On questions. Okay, just wanted to thank you.
They are open conversation.
One last question on two, and that is the order of the questions. Uh, I think that question number ten and question number eleven should be the first ones that people get to.
The responses, yeah.
Because it is misleading when you say pick three. So I believe that it'd be more responsive if ten and eleven were the first ones that people got to check off the box.
I also have, it does not have to be limited to three, that's just an option to make people choose a priority. But you could, you could let them choose them all.
Yeah, the challenge we.
Or the top five, yeah.
I still want it to be a different order.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with you. I kind of like the fact that ten more than you did. So you wanted earlier, but I'm human open. Because the doctrine of primacy applies here. And we have a whole lot of questions here. And what is the expectation that everybody should read every question all the way through and then start checking off boxes?
I think we lose the prioritizing that, because people will say whole building or another building, and then we read the rest of it. I think part of the idea of this was for your, as you're working to put together the community, you know, um, the needs and the attachment to the building and the structure of the building, what things people are most attached to is what we, I think, what we just get out of this.
Yeah, but that doesn't make any sense, because if you wind up saying, okay, I have an affinity for the clock tower, I have an affinity for the woodwork, all of it has to be there in a structure. So whether you prioritize or not, you have to have it go someplace.
Because, for example, the last plan for St. Paul's was the coffee rank. And that included the clock tower. It did not include the chapel. No survey like this was done. But was that right? Were people more attached to the clock tower? I mean, it just gives information so that you can identify the plan and, and preserve what people are most about.
I think the easiest way to, to, to compromise there is to take it from three to five. Because you pick number one or number two. If you pick none, you don't do anything else. If you pick the whole building, the likelihood is that you're gonna go through and you're gonna, you know, rank two to five.
I, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting the whole building first. Um, I think that actually might make sense, since most of the residents only know the whole building. And then from there, you can have people piecemeal it down to what they prefer from there. So you have whole building first, and then you have none at the bottom. I mean, it makes sense. You go from the whole to what everybody knows and taking it down. And then to nothing.
And I think we just established, people don't have whole buildings, they just.
Well, they know the outside, that's the whole building.
So it could be serious, but I, you know what, let me, does BCI have anything they want to share as far as what you would like to get out of this question? What, what do you think is most important here?
Mayor, I think you mostly covered it, just trying to get the priority for what's most important. I don't think we have any problem with putting whole building as the first option.
No. And, and expanding to five choices?
We don't have a problem with that either.
Yeah. Be good.
All right.
All right.
You now.
The number three, I don't know if you want to explain a little bit what you're thinking, and then hear the input on number three.
So the number three is, these are all uh, different features that we heard from the Recreation Survey, that there appears to be a, a relatively high level of support. I can't remember if we cut it off, that was ten percent or so of, of households. And we're just trying to verify both what we heard the first time and also how important it is that it's part of this project. And then we have some additional options, because the survey did not break down types of indoor pools, so we could try to ver- verify what type of pool people want, if they want an indoor pool. And then the follow-up just makes them choose, make a choice on what's most important.
So these were, these were the top items in the Recreation Survey, right? Because that's how we said we wanted to apply that.
The top items in the Recreation Survey that would, could be accommodated at the same time, yes.
But guys, I send you over my thoughts over the weekend on this stuff. And I like the, the, the list of stuff we have on number three, but I felt like when we, when I went to the following page, uh, I don't even know what number that is, it was another list of stuff on the next page that, again, I'm looking at this through the eyes of a young housewife, guy working hard getting home at nine or ten o'clock at night, he wants things simplified. I would combine those two together, I'll go through the whole list. And again, what I felt like the most important thing in this survey, or certainly one of the most important thing in, in this entire survey from day one, was to find out the information from all the residents as to what they would love to see in this building one day, if we were able to open the doors irrespective of the type of building it ends up being. And that was, for me, the most important thing is getting the information from, again, I said from day one, from the youngest couple that moves into town that has no kids, they're thinking about having a family, all the way through to, uh, again, eighty-five, ninety-year-old lady, uh, or, or gentleman that just wants to enjoy his, his final years in Garden City and go and play a bridge or hang out, or if he wants to go to the senior center, he still has a senior center to go to, but if he wants to go to St. Paul's, he wants to go meet his friends for a cup of coffee, or she does, that they have, they're, they're putting in what they would like to see inside this building, irrespective of that building it ends up to be.
I, I agree with you. I actually see value in simplifying this so that the items for this list of items is the same as our question three, so that we don't need to list it again. I do think it's important, though, to make it clear which features would not fit in the existing footprint of the building. Because there are certain items that just can't be built in the, in the building in its current footprint. You would have to be outside of the building or in addition.
And I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's also important to know that the, these are.
Yeah, I think it's also important to know that the, these are, three and four are really two different questions. Right? A- and so the lists are of, of spaces, features are the same. In, in the two questions, but the difference is the first time, we want to know how important they are and what their priorities are. The second time is when we start to talk about the different construction options. And so that they're, they understand. The difference between the, the, what can be and the different options. And so we're combining them doesn't allow us to then. To, to find out the same information, right? We, we need to ask what their priorities are. Are separate from whether or not they support a different construction option.
So.
I think there might be a way for us to reference back to the list. Yeah, to, to make that simpler, like, uh, Trish Maloud is requesting.
That would be better. I think, I think that would be better. And, and I guess my, my question on three. Is that it's just a lot, right? It's a lot of back and forth. And a few questions on question three. One is. Does it really matter what residents feel the preferred location of all of these options are? Because at the end of it all, first of all, we've done the rec survey, which was great, gave us really good information. And that narrowed the, the funnel down a lot for us, right? So here we have kind of what the top, we already know the top priorities from residents. That's this list, which is really helpful. So then in my mind, I'm like, where it goes. Will eventually, you know, be up to us, obviously with resident input, et cetera. But I don't know whether this question serves any purpose. You know, it's almost like I'm going to say no preference for the location over and over again until you figure out what goes in the building and what can't go in the building. I, I just, I, I don't feel it's helpful. And I feel like if. Added to the following question, it winds up being like, wait, I just answered this. And that's what I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about. And I like the next question, by the way. I like the next question. I've got it.
But it goes back to the premise that I just mentioned is. We're asking residents, this is supposed to be the St. Paul survey. We're asking residents, what, if they could and they had their wishes and we can afford it, what would you like to see inside that building?
The next one.
That's, that's what I thought. So why are we asking them?
Right.
Would you don't want, you don't want it in this building? You might want it in this building? You want it in a different location? I mean. That to me is confusing because for, to me, we're supposed to get the information, what would you like in the building? That's the first thing you have to establish. And then we'll see what the priorities are and see if we can fit the majority of what people would want in the building. And how many square feet can we eventually afford to finish in the priorities of what the residents want. But the intro. Before is what can and cannot fit in the building, but it's not what you want in the building. It is not what you would like. So as we try to determine the, the shape. And the size and the construction of the new St. Paul's. You know, in, in B and C, at least. Uh, our friends at BCI do not believe, you know, indoor pool, field space, gymnasium, indoor track is going to work. Yeah, that, I'm sorry, that, that could be included. Wait, is there anything that's not included here? I'm sorry.
Not probably included in different ways, right? Build downs.
Right, but, but it is talking about how would fit into a particular construction. Style or building style. That's why there's differences. And the issue is, you know, in, in three. Is it important to know where folks would want them? And is, that's the whole point? Is, is that your?
That's how I view it, yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think that it's confusing. I think you're telling people, here's what you've told us that you want. Here's what's a priority to be put into a recreation and a cultural center. Okay, we're looking at developing St. Paul's as a recreation and a cultural center. So let's just give them that option. And then from there, let them prioritize what they want. And then at the next question, you kind of say, hey, of that group. Here's what can fit into option A. Here's what can fit into B and C. I think this. Developed at another location, no preference. At that, I think it's going to throw people for a tizzy. And I think that you just kind of, we just tweak the question, kind of saying, look, this is what you've told us. We, here, here it is. Rank it. Rank your preferences.
So you're saying just have them keep the, pick the most important choices? That's it?
And you know what, I, I just before we get to that, because I think we're getting, I understand. I, I think I understand where you're going with this and why it would be really helpful to get the, these answers and. Rather than me saying, I'll let you explain how it would help. To have people fill it out this way, which I think we all recognize is more difficult than just what do you want in the building and check them off.
The difficulty is, if you have a question, develop at another location. This building, this village has been built out. We don't have any other locations. I mean, it, it's a fiction that we're perpetrating in question.
Well, really, that's not true, but let's let them answer because we do, we have community park. We do have other.
Yeah, I think if we look at the, if we look at the questions on the next page, we'll do with question four, for example, right? And, and the things that are in that list, right? We all know that the reality is, is that we're not likely to, to find that. Enough people in their village are willing to raise their taxes enough to, to. To afford everything everybody could want at St. Paul's, right? No, that's not going to happen. So by prioritizing what they want and maybe also. How important it is to them that it's at St. Paul's. Can then help us prioritize what should be in that use plan for St. Paul's to meet the budget that they give us, right? So if they say, if we find out that on average, people are willing to pay six hundred dollars for option A. Right? And then we know that the things that are most important to them from up above are the golf simulator and the stage and the teen center. And, and that, but that they don't necessarily care that they're at St. Paul's, but they feel like certain other things should be at St. Paul's. It all kind of helps us understand what should be the priorities when we have to narrow down what can go into. Of potentially preserving St. Paul's with the budget that they give us. That, that's the reason for that. Now, we could probably get pretty close to what people want if we, if we just ask them what their priorities are. For those um, features and not ask them whether or not they care if it's another location. Uh, but we might find that they don't want to put the pool there. Or they don't want to put something else there because they know that when there's a soccer tournament at St. Paul's, traffic is nuts. And they don't want to have to go to the pool when there's a soccer tournament because they can't find parking. And they also don't want to have a sea of parking at St. Paul's like you have downtown because then it ruins the aesthetic. So it all kind of helps us understand what, what people would really support at that location. Or if they're okay with not putting that in Paul's. And maybe we like the idea of not putting it at St. Paul's because it might be better all around if that thing is somewhere else.
So number three.
Go ahead.
So for number three, from number one, the proposed feature, right? From number one to number eleven, uh, all those items, right? I don't think, you know, developed at another location, um. Helps people answer these questions. And then it's also very open-ended. Um, I think if people could be thinking, you know, start thinking what are the locations, um, are possible locations, it's very open-ended. Uh, but like from number twelve to number eighteen, um, so those are the features requiring building modification, addition or separate location. So it's almost, there is a separation between these two groups of questions.
That's actually what I was about to say, is that that second part of that list is really. The key part of what we're trying to find out how important it is that it's part of the St. Paul's project. Or whether they would be okay with it going somewhere else.
So it's a separation. Do you, do you see what I'm saying? So there's a.
I do.
You know, two group of questions. One group, you know, it doesn't really make much sense for us to ask if they want it to be in a different location. But the bottom part from number twelve to number eighteen, it does make sense.
So maybe we break it into two questions. The first one being number, you know, one through eleven. And the four through one are your rank of how important that is to you. And then the ones twelve through eighteen are more about the location.
You can make that question number four, would you?
We, we could separate those out. And we could still then allow them on the follow-up question for what's most important, choose from the entire list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, in order, in order of doing things, again, just looking from a practical perspective. Doing what I do for a living. Very, very similar in different ways. I go to a customer, the customer says to me, Vinnie, here's my dream list. I want these six things in my home. Beautiful big old home. They're like, I'm going to be big. I want these seven or eight things. I says, give me your dream list. It, then once I have your dream list and I know what you want, then give me two or three weeks, I'll analyze your home. I'll talk to an architect and I'll see if this is feasible or if it's not. We're talking very similar situation here. Find out what they'd love to have. And then at another stage, which is certainly not now, then be able to tell them, listen, we'd love to give you that in St. Paul's, but we just, that's, that's not practical. Then you would have to say, okay, if you want that indoor pool, that would have to be a separate building. We'd have to do either on St. Paul's. Or maybe we do have an option somewhere else in the village. Maybe we don't. But at this stage of the game, I'd really like to see us make this as simple and as easy to understand and get the information we need. So people don't get frustrated looking at the survey and get confused and all of a sudden they're like, oh, you know what? I'm too busy with the kids. I'm too busy at work. I, I, I can't focus on this. That's all I'm saying here, you know, and I think we're, we're, we're going down the right path there. It's just a matter of tightening it up to make sure it's as simple and as easy to understand as we can.
So now if we have these uh, questions, items under proposed feature. Now back to what, what the module would say, um, on page two. The long list of items. So where are, where are we combining them? Do we still need, need to list?
They need, they need to stay separate, um, because we, we don't want to mislead people and make them think that in option A. They can get those things at the bottom. The pool, the field space, the courses, gym, the track. We don't want to mislead people and think those are possible. We want them to understand that if they're, if they like option A, those things in that top list are what, what the options are. That they're not getting those things at the bottom. So if we combine those lists, then we think it confuses people about what could go into option A. We want them to understand that B, C, and D would allow them to have those other things, right? But not if they do option A.
So I. I do think we could reference back to the list on the previous page rather than listing the information again.
Oh, so I think, I think you should keep them listed. Nobody goes back. And I, that would drive me crazy. And I, I'm wondering if, and again, this is for the simplicity sake, right? Do we really need all of the activities that you have listed on the right-hand side? I kind of know you could do yoga in a fitness room. I know that if you have a performance stage in a theater, you can have a dance and a music program. It, I understand what you were doing to add some definition, but it feels to me. I could figure that out. And I'm just thinking of having fewer words, right? There's so much content on this.
I, I disagree. I, I think that the residents haven't paid a lot of, there's a group. That are here that have paid a lot of attention. I'd say most of the residents have not. And one of the things that concerns me is helping them to visualize what's possible and what's not. And by having that there.
Okay.
It's a really, it helps you visualize, you know, like, oh my gosh, I didn't really think about, you know, team programs. I didn't really think about before and after school programs. Yeah, that makes sense. Or, oh, STEM, yeah, okay, meetings, rentals, yeah. It helps you visualize what's possible.
Okay.
Instead of just thinking sports.
Okay, fair enough.
And a perfect example of that is the golf simulators. A lot of people wouldn't even think about that. But unless you belong to a private club in town and you're a big golfer, people are like, oh my God, this is great. I can go down there for ten or fifteen years and. Play golf with the girls or the boys, uh, all winter long. And we could have, you know, six different golf simulators in a part of St. Paul's. And, you know, that's a thing that a lot of people might think about unless they saw it on there.
Right.
And, you know, so I, I, I'm not, I think it's a good idea to, to list as many things and options as we can that are realistic to put in the building. And then see, see where it all shakes out with the residents, you know, I do, so.
I think it'll be simpler if, we, since we have like facilities and spaces that could be included in options A, B, and C twice. We just did that once centered in the page and then two columns of the things that could go in there. It looks like, it looks like four separate lists right now.
Yeah.
And it, it's really just two lists. Right, John?
It's, well, it not, it's sort of, well, depends on how you look at it. There's, there's two lists of facilities and there's two lists of activities. Um, it, so, I mean, we can look at visually ways to make that clearer.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's important.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Just so.
Questions, right?
So are, are we working off of, of eight A?
I am.
I am too.
We've been focusing on E Day. Was anyone?
Good. I, I just want to confirm.
Definitely. Yes, that's your notes, right?
So I think that's a, an important point, maybe before we move forward because. Um, we feel like we've heard lots of different things from the group about. A, well, well, version eight versus version eight A, right? And that some people like. Uh, having the questions that are the long version, version eight, the ones that include options for demolition. And some people do not. And we know that some people are no way going to vote to release a survey that includes those questions. But we think there are others who would vote for that. But we, we've been creating two versions for that reason. Uh, but if, if there's a possibility that you're going to use those other options, we should talk about those. Um, or is it just that we continue to move as if those, there's two versions and you're going to vote for one or the other? And that, that would help us a little bit. If we got some clarity on, how do we move forward with the different versions?
Yes, do we need to continue to prepare two different versions?
My, my view would be no, and that we are squarely in, in focus on eight A. My, my view.
As far as the difference between, I think they mirror each other largely, don't they?
Well, yes, except for the, the two questions.
Yes, eight A had, is, is the, is the same as eight with so, with fewer options.
Right.
Just to produce.
Fewer options for the building.
Yes, few, it takes, it takes out all the options that would include removal of the building itself.
All right.
Yep. So, um, I think my sense is that we have, uh, will hope to have support for eight A. And that we will not have support for eight. I have wanted you to keep updating it because I do think it's. Sort of like what your recommendation is and, um. Good for people to understand that we did consider that. So people don't come back and say, well, why didn't you put demolition in? So they know we did. We considered it that way. We heard your advice and we balanced. And, you know, if we support eight A, we know why we supported eight A. And it's not like we didn't talk about the, um, you know. First, and I know we've, we've had discussions also as to, um. I, I think eight A, you're still recommending is mine. That's a put you on the spot here at the warm session. But that, you know, there's, I think you've articulated in, in email, and I'm not sure if it was said at a meeting. Advantages to going out at really broad aid. Um, but if we're going out eight A, do you think that's something that we will be able to get enough data? To hopefully be able to deal, hopefully be able to identify the project most likely to get uh, support at a bond vote.
Yes, we believe we can get the information we need from eight A. We would like to include question nine, though, to give, which is about if you prefer removing the building. To allow those who would like demolition to have a way of sharing their opinion. So that they don't feel like they're shut out. It was forty or so percent of the population. And we would like to know it, what might they support? If we can get this information from them, we can look. At the cross tabs and see, are there options that might be supported by that group of people who were in favor of demolition in the past? And if we don't ask a question about that, we cannot get that information. John, did you, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, I, I think, I think that's fine. I mean, I still think there's a piece of information we're missing if we find that, um, we go with the ver- the short version. And, and we don't, we don't end up with an option that we think will pass a vote. Because we'll know based on how many people choose very likely, somewhat likely or neutral, right? What percentage of the people we think. Would vote for it when it comes to a vote. And, and by, and we know that all the options that we have are very expensive. Um, we, I don't know that we can say for sure we're going to find an option that will pass. Um, and, and maybe the board is okay with, well, that's fine. If these don't pass, we're still not going to remove the building. Then, then fine, we can take it out. It, but I agree with Keith, having question nine there that asks, you know, why they prefer to remove the building. May give us an avenue to craft a, a, a plan at the end that some of them might support. Even though they might have supported removing the building more. There is a chance that they might also support an option that involves preserving the building. And this will help us know that and know what's most important to them.
And we might.
We gotta, we've gotta get to the point where you can get the votes for whatever the use plan is.
We might wanna get some of, some of those votes.
Oh, one thing, just on this aid versus eight A. And I just wanna make sure I understood it correctly, because we did have the public opinion poll still a little over a year ago. And um that I saw as a steer really, you know, we heard from the community. That they wanted us to explore ways, they supported us exploring um options to preserve part or all of the building. And that's what we set out and put together that mayor's advisory committee and that's been the goal. And the goal is a project, identifying a project. That does preserve part or all, whatever part that may be. So by taking out demolition at this stage, and I understand it may make it. More difficult to find a project is the only project that is taking out the demolition. High projects, so would this be sufficient to help us? You know, get all the data we could get to identify if there's a project that. Would have community support. Um that preserves part or all of it.
I, I, I think the, this survey will give us the results we need to say whether or not there is a project. To, to preserve some or all of St. Paul's. We just won't know that if there is not support for that, if there is support for a replacement project.
And that, you know, in, in hearing that explanation from you. My sense is that people are comfortable with doing that, the community would understand that based on the public opinion poll. And if we get at the end to, which I hope we don't, but if we get to the point of finding out there's no project. Then, you know, we start a whole new discussion.
The, the, the problem with nine, gentlemen, is that if you look at the six options. Other than, you know, and, and, and just putting seven to aside, aside for a second, not one of them. In, in, in my opinion. Would, would give me hope. That anyone who chose one through six could be convinced to support a project. They're all negatives and uh I don't see. I mean, maybe something can be crafted that, that has a silver lining. But I don't see that this wording in and of itself would give me support or, or. Make me believe that, that we could turn the folks who are in favor of demo.
So one thing we would be able to do is pick any one of these options. And then look at how people who chose that option answered the questions on the previous page. So we can see those who said, for example, I don't care about the building.
Yeah.
Were, were they in support of any of these options? And if so, at what rate? What percentage? And we can look at that for all of these different choices.
I, I understand what, what you're saying. I, I, I don't know what, what the value is, but uh I, I understand your.
I don't like nine at all and it shouldn't be here.
I understand.
We have gotten this far. With a plan. And we should not be going backwards.
Well, I, I'm sorry, we've obviously skipped to nine and we. I, I just think everybody has, has their opinions and I said it a thousand times, they should have their opinions, they should be respected for their opinions and we should be able to disagree. I've talked to a lot of uh people over the last three, four weeks who, who have, you know, older gentlemen that have been uh. In favor and, and, and are, are in favor of, of the demolition of the building. And I hundred percent respect that, they're great human beings, they're great residents of this village. I just personally disagree and that's just my stance and my stance, and I've talked to Mary about this. Of, of people that I've talked to over the last thirty years, not over the last six months, last thirty years. And the majority, the vast majority of people that I've talked, I'm gonna speak from my own experiences. Are in favor of keeping the building and doing something with it. And all, and during the election, it was clear that they said to me, Vinnie, just do something with this building. We're tired of hearing about it, we're tired of dealing about it, it's been thirty years, please, can you find a way to get this board to finally do something with this building? But there was a very, very small percentage of people that again, I respect. And I, I absolutely see their point of view in regards to the demolition of the building, you know what I mean? And the cost of doing a project like this, again, and, and they should be respected. But there comes a time where you have to try and work with the majority of people in the village that want to move forward with something in this building. And that's, that's my view and I've said it from day one, I've been consistent on it. And I respect anybody that disagrees with that too, you know, but that's where, that's where I stand and I wanna try and move forward and. By the way, do a project in this, in this building for once and for all, the majority of people will support. And we can get a bonded route and if the people who want to really remove this building and, and demolish this building, which again, I respect. They'll have their ultimate vote on the bond to go big thumbs down with, I do not want this project, I'm gonna vote it down. And I'm gonna get all my friends who believe the same way to vote it down. And if that is the majority, then we will find out on that bond board, hey, guess what, guys? You know what? Majority of people do not wanna do this project and they don't want this building to exist anymore. Uh I don't believe that's the case, but everybody will have the ultimate respect and vote on that bond board, in my view.
I, I just wanna chime in and I think some of the comments are missing the point of why they have a question here. And I think it's really important and I think we should all be. Concerned that there may not be a project, don't take for granted that they're going to be able to find a project with community support. I think most of us know from all the prior votes how challenging that's gonna be. And if, understanding and, and that point was great, right? Like that person, you're gonna find out. That their reason for voting for demolition is because the existing footprint will not support community needs. But you know they want X, Y, and Z and that will pay this much money. When your project goes out, that has what they're looking for and it's in their budget. They're not gonna go back, you know, that's the type of person who, who may support the project as in. Whereas someone who said, hey, Ray, Ray, I wanna save the building and then they get the project and they see the price. You might lose people, so I think there's a lot of wisdom in putting us in here. The one thing that just comes to mind is that I've heard from people. And someone said, I don't know how any of these people could be won over. I think that's a category. That absolutely existing footprint, like if that's what someone's focused on, that's their only objection. Good to know that now, because that's not. Really, you know, uh that doesn't mean they're out for any project. One thing I've heard is. I don't think the village could handle a project this day. And that's, I think, I don't know if that, if you heard that in your input, but. If that, maybe that should be an option too, because if that's the only issue someone has. With you on board, you know, in this professional approach we're taking. That, the people could get um, could change their opinion on that moving forward, so. If there are things that are missing, you know, maybe that's an idea, someone else has an idea, but I think. I think it's, it's really smart and we're taking away. Information that could help you find a solution here and that's something I wouldn't wanna do.
But what I would say to that, Mary, is it's up to us, the board and you, the mayor, all eight of us together. To go out and educate people over the next six months probably, give or take, right? Inspire people, persuade people with facts, with real facts, real honesty, real integrity. This is how much it's gonna cost, here are the options, here's how much your taxes are gonna go up and you, the resident. Get to decide what you wanna do and then we go, but it's our job. You know, BCI is fantastic and they've done a great job getting us to this point and will continue to work with us. But there comes a time where we have to go out to the public, just like we're doing tonight. Okay, and whoever's on Zoom and, and do our part to educate them, talk to them. And, and, and again, inspire them, right? You know, a part of our job is to inspire the residents around about us. And have them really be positive and believe that for once and for all, we can do this and we can do it, we can do it in an affordable way. That, yes, your taxes are gonna go up, everybody knows that. Question is. Can they go up enough where I can manage to pay that the majority of people in this village can afford to pay that tax increase to support this project? Included with the existing debt of the village, which is also so, something that nobody ever talks about. Is including the existing debt we have in the village, okay, with St. Paul's. Combine the two of them together, that's the real cost here. And that's where we eventually are going to have to bring that to the public's attention. Again, through transparency, honesty, do, due diligence and hard work and say, here it is, guys. You guys make the decision. That's, to me, is our job and, and we have, that's, that's our responsibility as trustees and mayor, if you ask my opinion.
Do you think that quickly, Princess, respond to one thing, because I think that is like your, you know, super scale. Like I love that, will be, you will be really strong when we're at that point of getting people excited about a project. What I'd like BCI to maybe just overview a bit here is why we're not there yet. And we have, in the past, we've gone to them and um had some ideas on things and got advice. Like, no, not now. And then when they explained it, I completely understand why. Um and it's part of the whole process that's been laid out and I think we wanna be careful that we don't. Jump ahead and miss this really important, like the listening step, we're not at the cell yet. And in one of the recent emails, there was a timeline, I, I don't have it pulled up now, but they can probably talk, you know, at what stage. This is listening still. This isn't pricing, selling a plan. And if, if you guys could just give a brief overview of. Why this, you know, what happens after this when we hear and when we get to. The enthusiastic, oh my goodness, here we are, we have a solution after thirty decades, get excited, this is what it's gonna be. This is what it's gonna cost, that whole stage. So if you guys could just overview that for the board.
Like we're getting really far away.
But no, it's not, it's fundamental, it's, it's an important thing. I think Vinnie, I'm happy you brought it up. I think that's part of where there's a little kind of conflict here. And I think it's, it's really, really important, because if we can all come together on this process and do it, you know. Uh could be successful. So let them just explain that, because some of us have been more involved for longer, others have not. And I think it's a good time to just hear that.
I guess I'll go then. Alice is speaking up. So um I, I think it, your question, you know, I'll start with question nine real quick. And I think that um, you know, again, it's part of learning about what's gonna help us come up with something that's gonna pass. There was a, a, a vote that was sixty, forty, right? But, but that sixty could have really been thirty and thirty, thirty for full and thirty for parcel, right? We, we have no idea. Right? And we don't know if all those are still gonna vote in favor of this bond, because we do, we don't know what, what's gonna be in it yet. Um similarly, we don't know that everybody that was in that forty percent will vote against the bond if they're getting something out of it that they want. Right? So, so all of this is built towards that. Um and the, and then the other thing that, so in learning the priorities for what they want in the building. Which construction option is preferred, right? We'll kind of get an idea of which construction option with which features that'll support which activities. Could get enough votes to pass, right? The other thing that we'll get to know when we ask them how much they're willing to pay, after we do some, some additional um analysis is. What, what that tax increase people will vote for and what that will enable the village then to turn into. Um a construction budget, right? If, if it's a four hundred dollar increase, then you. Go to the, the bond council and you can work with the village administration to figure out, okay, if we get a four hundred dollar increase. Then we have different financing options available to us, maybe it's a twenty year, maybe go to this state and ask for a thirty year. Because that might give you the opportunity to increase your construction budget, right? You can do those things knowing that they're gonna support that amount. And then, once you know your construction budget and you know what the priorities are for what type of construction project people will go for. What features and activities they want it to include. You can then craft that um, the, the use plan. That then you kind of know, okay, we're gonna do this type of construction, it's gonna include these features, this is, this is our budget, right? Let's cost that out just to make sure that we can get all those things before we go to a vote, right? If we, if we don't understand what the priorities are, or we cost it out bef- you know, before we know what the priorities are. We're costing out something that we don't even know if they want that, right? So let's wait and cost out what we are pretty sure they're gonna vote in favor of. And then know that if we've gotta cut things to fit within that budget, we know which things we can cut because they prioritize those. So that when we nail down that use plan at the end, we know that we've gotten to the point that, well. We're pretty confident that we've gotten to the point that we've got the right combination of construction budget and, and features. And type of project in there that people will vote for. So it's a building process. We start with what their priorities are, we start with how much they'll pay. And then we back into later on, what's that mean for a construction budget um and that people, we think people will vote for. If we go ahead and find and decide now what the construction budget is before we know what people want or what they're willing to pay. We risk going to vote with something that they're not gonna, they're not gonna vote for, because we have no idea. We don't know if you're gonna support an eight hundred dollar um per person, per household project, um because we never ask them first if they'll do that. And, and then we set ourselves up for a vote that's not very likely to pass. And, and so that's sort of how we're building that process, how we'd like to see that done. I don't know, Keith or Pat wanna add anything to that?
Uh no, John, I think you did a pretty good job of describing it. Yeah, no, I don't really have anything to add.
Yeah, I don't either.
Going back to question nine. If you prefer removing St. Paul's. And then you have nine subsections six, do not support removal. That does not appear as, as intellectually consistent with the question that being, being asked.
That was a trustee request in defense of BCI.
So.
But it doesn't make sense.
Exactly, I know, but that was.
If we don't, if we don't include that as an option, we have to have a question before this that asks whether or not they support removal. Because otherwise you are having a question where there's a lot of people who do not have an option that they could choose. You don't wanna force people to choose a reason that they would want to remove the building. So you want to allow them to say, I don't, I don't wanna do that.
So Keith, going back to John's point, which I think for the public is a big one to understand and, and it's one that I, I disagree with. And I understand the angle John has taken, I understand why, but to me, it doesn't work. How can you ask, and I said this at the board meetings too, how can you ask anybody that lives in this town? Would you pay four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars or more? For something that you have no idea what you're gonna get, how many years you're gonna pay for, and what the total would be for how many years you live in this village? To me, that is just a question that I could not support asking anybody. Because it's a hypothetical question versus saying to somebody, okay, if you pay four hundred or six hundred dollars hypothetically, okay? Going back to hypothetical, okay? And you have to pay it for twenty years, we're gonna do a twenty year bond, so twenty years times four hundred dollars equals, if I live in this town. For twenty years and I'm thirty-five years old and I'm gonna get, you know, X amount of square feet in St. Paul's to enjoy those twenty years with my kids. My grandparents, everything else like that. That's something I can sit down and say, you know what? Yeah, I'd absolutely pay six hundred for that. And over twenty years of ten or fifteen years, that's how much it's gonna cost me. Yeah, absolutely, I'd sign up for that. But when you just ask somebody, what would you pay, four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred, a thousand? And you don't tell them how many years you're gonna pay for, the interest rate, da, 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 da. How can we, how can we seriously ask our residents to answer that question honestly? If we're not giving them the information, at least giving them what I, I talked about, ballpark. How long the bond is for, so they can calculate, hey, you know what? Yeah, I'd absolutely support that, because I have enough of information to make that decision. Can you guys answer?
Yeah, we, we talked about that one and, and I think that one of the things that we, we talked about today that we think. Be a good addition is, is um at the top of um page two. Um where we do the introduction to that question, um where we say, please consider each of these options independently. And assume potential tax increase amounts would last for at least twenty years. All right, I, we don't believe that the average resident wants to or knows enough to get into the weeds. Financing options and the interest rates and all of that, but that's really up to the village and the bond council to figure that out. That they kind of know what things are worth to them and not what they're selecting here. The problem with, with putting out a cost estimate. Is that then we're signaling that we've already, we've already figured out what's gonna go in the building. Because you can't come up with the cost estimate until you know what type of construction project it's gonna be and what's gonna be in it. So by putting out that cost estimate, you've signaled to people that this is what the project is gonna be and we're not there yet. And with this survey is gonna help us get there. But if we go already and tell people how much it's gonna cost, we've basically already told them, we decided for them. What the project is gonna be and what's gonna be in it and we don't recommend doing it that. What the project is gonna be and what's gonna be in it, and we don't recommend doing it that way.
Even if you have a cost estimate for all three options?
Okay, you could do, what then, what does each of those options include?
Yeah, and then and then you have to hire a a different firm than us. To prepare all those three cost estimates, and that's gonna take several months for them to do an additional cost for you. And so then you can't come back and do this survey that we're talking about. Probably until next next summer, right? So then you can't get it on the ballot next November. Because you've 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 had to cost out three different options. Um, and you don't need, and and then even then, by by costing out three different options, you've made a lot of decisions for people. At that point that that we haven't made yet, that we think the survey will help us make. Um, so that's part of the challenge is that by costing out all those options, you're adding a lot of time to the process. That you may not want to add. And and probably some cost.
I think, um, I don't remember when this was, not that long ago, a month or so ago, it'll be. No, didn't we look at like what four hundred dollars would equal? We did the math on this at a meeting, and we said for eight thousand homes, and it was four hundred dollars per year. I think it was like on a twenty year bond, it came out to a fifty million dollar project.
I don't think we should go down that.
You did it.
Yeah, I I think it's it's more complex. And we did that for the public opinion poll, and we saw how complex it is. And I think to have that discussion and start throwing out numbers. Is not the right way to go, because then people may be lying, and it's if we've done that, and we have not.
Yeah, it was definitely back to the number.
Yeah, so I don't think.
And I also think, and I I've looked at at my uh village tax. For sure, not for sure, but one major. And uh uh looked at the the valuation of a home. And started back into uh what I am paying. Um, it's, I think it's a too difficult a process. And and I also think there are many people who don't see their taxes, except for maybe once a year, because the mortgages and the mortgage bank is paying. Um, I think it's a good idea, John, to put in that um, that additional information that you should assume that this is. Going to be a twenty year commitment. It could be a thirty year commitment. I don't think there'll be less than twenty. And. I think it's good to get a board one. It's an imperfect. Question, but anything that you tried to do that was more perfect, that John has has demonstrated. Will force us to make assumptions. Uh, that is premature to me. And we will have time to to sharpen, obviously, what what the what we believe the the residents will pay. When we go to the the bond home. So I, no. Each of the questions four through seven have that that subsection about price. And I know Benny, it it kind of hurts you, and it and it's not, it's not. You know, gonna get you what you believe we need to see, but I think as as young residents. That what we talked about all the way up to my age, then through my age. Um, you're like, oh, it's okay, I have four hundred, but if I can get a, you you get a uh a uh a dance studio in there and and I can get. Stand for my grandkids and, you know, who live down, blah, blah, blah. Um, but I think it's important to get something.
No, I I I agree with some idea. My my thing is, let's at least give. The residents a little bit more. Accurate information. We can't give them accurate information of what exactly is gonna go on, but we know that, right? Okay, we've said that from day one. But at least give them, okay, it's gonna be based on a twenty year bond. And if you spend four hundred lots, and I'm gonna live here twenty years, it's eight thousand dollars. Okay, now, and so people say, oh, my God, I can't afford eight thousand dollars over twenty years. And other people are saying, it's no big deal. It's that that's that's nothing to make here. You have completely different views here, depending on what age you are in the village. You know, both very young staff, and often strapped, just bought your house, and somebody who's retired and living on a fixed income. So my thing is, let's give them as much information as we can to make that decision. And yet not getting, not delved into like what Mary says, not delved into numbers that are not accurate. But yet it is very helpful for people. I know it can be misleading to have ballparks to understand, hey. We we talking about five million here, a hundred million, fifty million, thirty million? People would rather isolate, at least give me some idea of, just like when I deal with homeowners. Give me some idea, Benny, am I spending fifty to a hundred million? Am I spending twenty to thirty million? Give me some idea. So I have it mentally in my head that I'm I'm somewhere in this ballpark versus like, oh, my God. I wouldn't waste my time if I thought I was going here, right? That's all I'm saying.
Can I bring up, I wanna bring up a related issue, because I brought this up a couple of times in emails, I'm curious what everybody. The reaction to my concern that each of the options has, and I know I've sent this to you guys. Um, has the same dollar in that. And yet. Uh, if I look at, you know, option including an indoor pool, there is no way that that option costs. A minimal amount of money, just by adding that pool, you're adding an extraordinary expense. And so to me, it feels very misleading to say to residents, you know, I would be willing to pay four hundred dollars to get. Um, option B and C with an indoor pool and indoor field space, but that's not possible. So I don't know.
Right. And that's why we have the question on the previous page for them to prioritize what they want. Um, so that we we know, we all know, right? That they're not gonna get a, well, option A, they're not getting a pool anyway, right? For for B, C, or D, they might, they, well, B or C. They might get a pool, right? But if if on average, they're only willing to to increase taxes four hundred dollars. Then we know at that point that we can't include the pool in the use plan, right? And we explained that when we when we put together the use plan. That the budget you've given us will not support the pool. And I think I think most people will know. That the more things you put in there, the more expensive it is. Um, but maybe we get lucky and they all choose eight hundred dollars and we figure out how we can get a pool. For the eight hundred dollars per person, right? Because we might be able to finance it in such a way at that point in time, that we can extend that construction budget. We just don't, we don't know that yet, right?
I don't know. I I think it's, I think it's misleading. I I really do. The residents to be able to say, well, you said four hundred. You give me an option of four hundred to pay for that, and then you're gonna tell me it's double that. Like, that feels a little bit like a bait and switch to me.
I think you have to emphasize that it's what's the highest level that you would pay, not what do you want to pay? But, you know, maybe I don't know.
That's how the question is, that's how the question is written. What is the highest level of annual property tax increase you would support to fund this construction project?
I think you should emphasize the word highest.
Okay.
We could put it in all caps or something.
Yeah, some people might just gloss over that, you know? Not what do you want? We all want to just pay four hundred dollars.
Well, everybody wants as much as they can get, and then they don't wanna pay anything for it. But what we need to find out is. What will you pay?
Right, what's that, what what do you thought, what's the highest you're uncomfortable with, what you want?
Right. And and I think, you know, for the for the those amounts, right, we understand that. You know, the the different projects could cost different amounts. But there's probably a bare bones version of each of those that you could come close to with four hundred. Four hundred dollars a person. It's not gonna include a cool, a pool and an indoor, um, you know, field space if it's four hundred dollars a household. But some bare bones version of each of those construction options could happen at that amount. And by using different amounts for different options, then then we're setting up the least expensive ones to get selected more. Um, then then maybe they would if all the amounts were equal. And so that we we feel like by keeping those amounts where they are, we could, we could get a bare bones version. And if we put one of them starting at two hundred and one of them starting at six hundred, well, guess which one's gonna get the most support, right? The one that's two hundred. Um, so we we don't think that that's, that we wanna separate them like that.
I know, there was a suggestion, I think it was mentioned before, where we just ask in general, instead of under each option, what's your?
Yeah, so I think we answered that before, but we'll we'll address that again. So. One of the things that we've learned in listening to people in Garden City is there are very different opinions about what can and should happen with that building. And some people we know are gonna be willing to pay more money for option A, no matter what's in there. Than what they would be willing to pay for option B or C, right? That they they really are strong preservationists, and they want to save every brick on the outside. And so they're only choosing A, and they might pay eight hundred dollars a year for that. But if you're looking at, you know, option um B, where maybe one of the wings comes down, or maybe you lose the um, the chapel. Like, well, I'm not gonna pay you a hundred dollars for that. I'm only paying four hundred dollars for that. So that's that's why we think the amounts need to be different for each option. Because we we know there's strong feelings from people about which option they like, regardless of what's in it. Right, and they might also choose either less or none if they're afraid that an option they don't like will be the one that's selected. And then we get numbers that that just don't tell us anything.
I mean, you do have the number amount, but after each option, you also have, if you're you're likely to support or you don't support. You can just go with the option that they don't support, and then you have a a general idea of how much money you would like to spend. Because separately, you do get the idea of which option is supported.
Like, I I guess I've lost, I've lost the question now. I I are you still suggesting that we don't have this, the? Follow up question about what's the highest level of profit tax increase you would support? You're saying we only asked that one time?
The likelihood of supporting something is listed from somewhat likely will not support to very likely.
But then you're you're assuming that if they, if they're very likely, that they're gonna pay more.
Financial support with different options. How that would help you.
It's hard to make that assumption.
So can I, um, kind of sort of pull where we are, because I think we had a lot of good ideas. So. So I think we said one thing we would, you would uh think would make sense, right? Is to have a little bit more explanation upfront that this most likely will include um an increase to taxes over whatever. Right, right? So we have a little bit more in there. Then there's another school of thought that says. Do we put a dollar amount, not a tax increase amount, but a dollar amount associated with different options, right? That's what you would think. Is that fair?
Right.
So that's that's another option, and we could either, I suppose, put that. You could put that here, you know, potential, whatever. Or you could put it in the explanation that being ranged from, I know from all of them, from ballpark.
Yeah, the the problem with that is. Yeah, if we do that, we can't do the survey anytime soon. Because we have, we can't put cost estimate ranges in there that we aren't comfortable with. Um, and then we're also limiting what people, what options people can choose if we do that. So. I, that would be problematic.
Why is it, I'm curious, why, why do you say it limits the options?
Well, unless you're gonna do a a cost estimate for every, every different version of option A. And every different version of option B, right? Then you don't really know what your ranges are. And and so maybe you start with a a a option A that includes everything that could go on option A. And then you try to work your way down to different, you know, the different versions of it. Um, but you're you're eliminating, you're you're creating that bottom of the range by eliminating things without asking residents what they prefer you to eliminate. Does that make sense?
It does.
It does, it does.
I think the struggle here is still for all the different options. I mean, option D, obviously, it's going to be. Probably much lower than option X C three, right? And then with the same range of dollar amounts, um. Think that's how it's structured. It just, it's it's, these options are not equal. And then, but it would be full of amounts, it is. Uh, I I I don't think.
But but you don't, but you have the the ability to express a view on the dollar price. Based on your likelihood of supporting it. So you have. You you've got the ability to move around your your affinity. Okay, which is one through five, and then how does that affinity translate into into dollars? And and I think, I I I I think we have to do it this way. I think it's smart to stay away from from ballparks. Um, we've gone through that. The the with with Westerman, um, it it changes the entire nature of of what we're trying to do. We need to know what they want, what the residents want to do with the building. That's that's the driver here. And once we understand that. You know, combined with an indication of what they would pay.
Spoil, those are the two key things here. What do they want?
Yes.
And what are they willing to pay?
Yes.
But it's very hard still to say, what you're willing to pay, when you don't know what you're gonna get. Or you, you're perceiving what I might want in my head and what I'm, but but it's very hard. I know they'll fill out likely or unlikely, not at all, whatever it is. I I get that, but it's still, it's still a hard question to answer when you don't have the facts you need to answer that question. But I get that they don't exist yet, because there is no blueprint for exactly what we wanna do. That's why, to me, it is still helpful. Even though I know the lads here are 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 not in favor of that, of putting ballpark. So if I wanna pick, you know. C or D as opposed to, you know, A and B, oh, my God, that's double the price. So I have no chance. I'm not supporting that. You know, because there's lots of people in this room, and there's lots of people in the village. They're like, absolutely not. So I get you wanna get the information. It's just, it's just working that fine line, but we'll get there, we'll get there. That's what we're here talking about, can I?
The problem is. We have to acknowledge it's a fiction. That's difficult. And we're gonna have to field the question. The people are gonna say, well, what am I getting? And we said, well, we really don't know. I mean, it's sort of like your son comes to you and says, well, by the way, I wanna go lease a car. I said, okay, what car? Well, I really don't know. Well, how long you gonna pay for the lease? Well, I don't know that either. It what what options you gonna have on that car? I don't know that, but I still wanna lease a car. So.
Yeah, Bruce, I think that what we're trying to do is answer those questions through this survey. What do they want? So that when you go out for the vote in the end, they know then what they're getting for that cost, right? Then they know what they're voting for and what it's gonna cost them. That's that's the ultimate goal, but that's not until you get to that referendum. That's not in this survey. We're we're trying to get there.
You're trying to put numbers to a desire. But you're not saying what you're actually gonna get for that desire.
Say you are saying that. That's what that list is, is what you're gonna get. Option A, right? Am I right? Under option A, that full loaded list of all those things is what you would get.
What you, what you could, what you, what you could.
But it's it's like a thing, it's dreaming big, right? Saying, I love, is those things on that list? I really, I I want those eight things. But but you know what? I'm only gonna pay, I'll pay six hundred dollars. I I'm only paying, but I'm hoping that if I pay six, I'm hoping.
Right.
But if I pay the six hundred, I'm gonna get the eight things in the list. Six hundred dollars there, you come back when you have actual facts, you're like, guess what?
So I think.
I can make it, you're gonna get four, you know what I mean?
I think where it comes down to is.
But that's okay.
It what it's gonna come down to is we were voted in to help make this decision. And we're going to have to let the residents tell that, look at this. Tell us what they want, and from there, we've gotta sit down and say, this is what makes sense, and then put that out in the end.
Yeah, and then they vote.
And and that's why they elected us, is to kind of be wise. Look at things with practical manner and a conservative manner, and then present them with what they think makes sense.
The residents will tell us what they want, what they'd like to pay, and hopefully, again, by tweaking this a little bit more, putting that out. That's the information we're gonna get. The thing I love is it's gonna go to every resident of the village. And whether you don't wanna fill it out or you do wanna fill it out, I do think mailing wise, we have to think, uh, this has to be a little bit. You know, to me, a little bit more focused than the other surveys, we personally. So when it goes out there, you really like it pops when you open your mail. You're like, okay, it's St. Paul's, I'm excited. Let's 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 fill this thing out and send it back in.
I'm gonna send it first class mail.
I think from, we got the point from the feedback today, which I think everyone, the the highest, emphasizing the highest level. And I understand the struggle, but I also think as far as the budget, if you think about it, you're talking with a friend about. Think cause and what he would pay, right? And love a few of these now there. And they say four hundred, no problem, six hundred, no prob- eight, you know, like, everyone's got a number.
Yep.
Where they're gonna be like, whoa, can't afford that. And that's all we're asking for. How high? And let's assume it's gonna meet all of your, you know, you're gonna get everything we dreamed of there. In whichever of these different options. Where's your budget? Where's your stopping point? It's all, I think that BCI is trying to get out here, and that is helpful in funding that project.
I would invert the numbers.
Yeah.
You go from the high numbers to the low numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that.
Yeah, we've talked about that. Bruce, we we agree with you. We're gonna invert them. We're gonna start with the fifteen hundred and then end with the none.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already discussed that, and we're planning on doing that the next.
Yeah, the numbers have to be higher, definitely.
Because the great thing is, you are gonna see whenever we send it back, you you know, people, I I probably believe are gonna be honest, and there are people who are gonna say, absolutely not. And there are people who are gonna say absolutely not. I can't afford a tax increase. I'm on a limited, uh, retirement budget. I just moved into town. Sorry, guys, I loved it, but I'm barely holding on here with what's going on with inflation. Tax increases anywhere across the board. And, um, you know, but, and so. Yeah, I know. It'll be, uh, it'll be interesting to see that, you know, no question about it. Cause I, I've talked to people on both sides, zero and fifty one. You know, and everything in between, you know.
It's been a force and thank you.
Right, right.
Because I get it a lot of times, how much is it gonna cost? You need, you need to know what it's gonna cost. Everybody.
Alright, so, so here we are, we're.
So let's go on with those options.
You know? Yeah, we, we try to know nine is. We're gonna have to decide what we see a final issue, a final one.
So I think with question nine, maybe there's a version of the survey that includes it and one that doesn't. And then you all decide which ones you wanna, which one you want to pass. Is that true?
Quickly, can I make a comment on number nine?
Yeah.
Um, so let's look at, uh, the seven different options, right? So if you don't care about a building, it's kind of number one and number two already, right? They give two nine. I used to choose nine for number one, number two. That's where you could pause your, uh, opinion that you don't care about doing. Now, number two, cause renovation village can't afford, um, so that's kind of the other options where you could check none. I just feel this is covered. Is it like repetitive? Because, I mean, we are hearing people's voice. And there is space where, um, you could say none of these, right? Like I don't want them. Not, I don't, I don't wanna pay any of these numbers and I don't support any of them. But feel the voices that have been heard there. Uh, next one, the renovated building won't be useful to us. That's actually what we're trying to find out. We, we did the first survey. Um, and then, you know, the community needs and then our projects and everything. That's what we're trying to find out from the first and second survey. Number four, existing footprint will not support community needs. Again, that we were trying to find out from this survey, if this is supporting community needs. Because these are the, we identified already and these are the spaces, um, that we're trying to accommodate the needs. Again, there's some people are finding out from the service instead of from a per personal perspective. I feel like whether this will address community needs, it's not like a personal, but more as a community needs, not my enemy. Uh, I think that's what we're trying to find out from the survey and not from an individual, um, survey answerer. And then village already has all needed spaces. Again, this is what we're trying to find out from the survey itself and not from an individual. Um, person and do not support, I can cover that. So I, I just think like, remember it's a little repetitive. I feel many things are already covered, um, in different parts of the survey. And there are questions that are answered that we're actually trying to find out from doing the survey to everyone in the. So that's just.
I, I think if you do an option without, I think you said it before. But do you wanna just in a sentence say why you want that question? Cause I'm not sure. We're not saying. You don't want to find out how much support there is for demolition for particular reason. If you wanted to explain again, how understanding the reasoning will help you out.
Let me just inter, interrupt for one second, because I don't like the question. I would, if you're going to use number nine. I would rephrase it, say, to as to the option of removing St. Paul's. I would then make number six one, and then you'd be the others. The existing footprint doesn't make sense. Because it's a, it's a weighted question. So if you say as to the option of removing St. Paul's, if that is the information you're seeking to obtain. You then have to say, yes or no. So you say, do not support removal. If you then wanna find a subset of that information. You can use some of the other questions, although. I don't think that. Three or four are relevant to the information that we're seeking to get.
Uh, I, I think that with, again, like we said before, did Keith, Keith had explained this and I'll try to, to. To do it justice, because I know he has to, he has something else he has to go to, but, um, we'd like to use all of those options. To do, you know, cross tabs with the other questions, right? So if somebody has chosen none or small dollar amounts, right? Or they've said will not support, maybe it's because we, we would probably need to do a little bit more education. And so we can use how they answer question nine in the next phase in the use plan. And when, when you are preparing for that final vote, you can use how people answered that to, um. To frame your marketing to the ones that, whose votes you really need to get, particularly if you think you're gonna be close to not, not passing, right?
The way that you worded the question.
Yeah, and that's fair. We can, we can work with, with rewording the way we opened that question. And I agree with you completely about mo- moving number six up to the top. Um, I think that's a good, that's a very good suggestion. Um, but we, we think there's value in this question when we put together the use plan and you do the marketing for the vote next year.
I think you can reach most of these people in some way. None of these options are, wouldn't support anything no matter what. So it's possible to find out, okay, what might they actually support?
See, part of the difficulty here is that you're just gonna give us percentages and numbers. And you're not gonna be able to say that John Doe answered on one question one way and it correlates to question nine. It's all gonna be one large bullion eggs. So, I don't know.
We'll be able to say for everybody that's selected option four, this is how they answered all those other questions, right? We can't do it by the individual, obviously, but for anybody who said they don't believe the existing footprint will support community need. We can see which of the options they actually prefer, right? And we can use that information when we, when we put together the marketing later on.
Do you have a sense of people who usually vote negative on a project that you're doing, creating surveys for? Do they actually take the time then to go through the survey? Like, do you think a lot of the people who voted no for demo, you know, voted to demolish the building? In the original survey a year ago are gonna take the time to answer this? I don't.
I think they will.
I, I, I don't.
I think they're gonna wanna say, no, I don't want any of this. And I, I think they're gonna wanna make that clear.
So do you think they'll take the time to answer all the other stuff in the front part of the? They'll take the time to go through all this and, or will they look right away for the question number nine?
Oh, no, no, what they'll do.
I think they will ju, they may skip all the way to question four so they can take none and will not support.
But they would be doing themselves a disservice if they skip all those other questions. If they really care that much, then they should answer those questions.
But also, if, if we have, if we have results for number nine, we can see if they did that. Then we'll know.
Yeah.
Alright, should, should we, we go on to four, uh, to seven?
I'm sorry, but I, I have to go. John and/or Pat might be able to stay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, we think everybody's good with question ten now, right? And then the, the, the introduction to the pool questions, is that su- now sufficient? Pool questions, are we all on board with the understanding that these may not be at St., the pool may not be at St. Paul's, but we wanna follow up on the rec survey? Are we?
I, I, well, I have an issue with thirteen. And just for the record, you know, we haven't done four through seven or eight. And maybe, maybe it'll go faster than, than I think. But on, on thirteen, it. When you talk about dollars and cents here, um, you're, you're talking about two different projects. And, and, and I, I just, I wanna limit, uh. The, the, uh, the, the seeking of information here about what a resident will pay. Simply or exclusively as it relates to St. Paul's. Um, if, if, if there's, there's definitely gonna be a cost if, if there's an indoor swimming pool. Um, that is built in, in a facility other than St. Paul's, uh, that would be, you know, fairly meaningful. And I think we're, we're going to kind of muddy the waters a little bit on how we can get to the best. Decision or in, in, in fashioning a plan for St. Paul's. Uh, if we just limit the dollar issue to that particular project.
Thirteen, I suggest that you change your fund development solely. By putting the word solely of an indoor, indoor pool. That's how you find out tolerance for that. And I would also flip the numbers to the eight hundred comes first.
Yeah. Well, we, we, there's also, you know, you don't, this is a huge project. I don't know if it would ever come out of the operating budget or. Not, not, not the operating budget. That was, that was silly. Uh, but I think it just muddies. The financial waters here and that's another issue. And a, a, an entirely separate, uh, uh, undertaking than what we're trying.
But here's, here's two things I will say on that, right? I've been quiet for almost ten minutes and that's, that's a merit for itself. So I, I do think, again, the whole idea here is to not think of our lifestyles. Alone, our period of time alone, our decade here, two decades of living in this village of three. We wanna look forward. We wanna think forward. We wanna like, okay, for all these amazing young people, some of them might be even our own kids or grandkids. Already live in this town or, or may live in this town. Five years now, ten years now, fifteen years now. When I see indoor pool.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. I think it covers all the bases from little kids who wanna get swimming lessons in this village. Okay, to grandparents, all the way through. There are swimmers, there are just, we've been some of the most amazing. Uh, state championships, you know, I mean, more so than lacrosse, it's breaking all the cross bears, including my own family. Uh, swimming is a big part of this village. And I think, uh, an indoor pool is a home run. How you get it done, how you pay for it, totally different ballgame. But I do think it's a great idea. I think it's something that should be done. Uh, but I also think that there is no question about it in my view. My first, my personal view, you can put a pool in St. Paul's. It's not like you can't. The size of the pool. Is completely different. What size pool you can put in. Because again, the, the most important thing when you do indoor pools is very simple. It's ventilation, okay? So for instance, St. Paul's, do you want it? You have a big deep basement. You can just put it right into that basement. Take out one of the upper floors, have a two-story structure with lots of glass looking down into it with balconies and stuff like that. The size of the pool completely up to debate in, in, in plans and future plan. But two things, I think it's a great idea. And I do think that we can fit a certain size swimming pool, indoor swimming pool in St. Paul's. Just looking from the inside out. That's all.
Is that more than likely it'll be an enterprise one? Because that's how we're running the community pool. So. There are different dynamics to the pool than there are St. Paul's. Hence the reason why this is an information question only in regard to.
Eleven, twelve, fourteen, I'm fine with. I'm fine with. I just wanna take out thirteen.
See, here's, I'm really struggling with that though, because I.
Thirteen folks that you, you've probably seen it, it's the breakout of what you would permit.
I think we are getting, I think we are getting a lot of support for a pool. Where people have no clue how extraordinarily expensive it is. And I think that we, I, I, I worry that we keep going down the pool road without. I mean, we got some numbers, right, that are definitely, you know, um, based on not New York and all that kind of thing. But, but it is extraordinarily expensive. And if we were going to fund that, we probably couldn't do half what we wanted to do in St. Paul's. Cause we don't have all that money to spend. So the more we continue to ask people if they want a pool without providing. Some financial information of, people are completely unaware of. I think we are, I think we're going down a road that we're not gonna be able to come back from. And we're gonna be, it's gonna cause more problems.
We need to do that. And plus you're gonna have labor costs higher for that.
You know, I think on this, this is another big topic. And one thing I particularly like about VCI is that they have a lot of pool experience. And this is for another, it sounds like Bruce had some input, you had some info. Do you have anything to say? And we might wanna get to our last topic because I think two hours should be our hand point.
Yeah, well, the, the, the pools, I think I sent some numbers today on everybody, if Ralph passed those on to everybody or not, but. Um, we've done a lot of case studies on indoor pools. We've designed a lot of indoor pools as well. But you're gonna need at least twenty thousand square feet, uh, just to get the kind of pool that, that's community really needs. And this survey is gonna help us identify which bodies of water they want the most. Is it competition? Is it recreation and fun? Uh, you know, diving, what, what is it that they want? Um, and when we start looking at the operating costs for indoor pools. That's the scary part. Because we, we haven't, we haven't found an indoor pool that doesn't operate at, at less than a deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And if you start limiting it to residents only, uh, then that's just gonna make it even worse. Um, so it's something that you've gotta be prepared for. It, they're great programs. It's a great facilities. Um, you know, you, they'll be teaching more people to learn to swim and, and all that is, is great. But there is a cost, ongoing, uh, cost to that that you gotta keep in mind. Not to say you don't do it, it just, you gotta. You know, balance that with all the money you're gonna be spending on trying to renovate and use, reuse the building. Uh, the, the school building.
So that, I think we'll circle back. We'll, we've heard some feedback on that continuing online or conversation. Um, and then the last thing that I think we didn't hit on at the feedback, um, was the inclusion of the facade option. Is that the only other thing we haven't gotten to discuss?
I think, well, I think there was also, I don't think we've gotten the final, uh, decision on question fifteen.
You know, we can't, we're not really making decisions here, so.
Right, but yeah. So, well, you wanna go back and discuss options A, A, B, and C?
And D.
Just this could be an opportunity for everyone to hear, kind of, you fielding the questions. And I think. The, the one that I see was rings on whether or not to improve the status of, if you wanna speak to that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we understand that, that some people feel like that's a terrible option. And that, um, it, it shouldn't even be considered that it's very expensive. Um, I think that, that we don't, we don't, based on what we saw from the Westerman estimates. That it, you know, it is probably doable and probably possibly doable in the same ballpark as some of the others, depending on what you put in it. And, and I think if we learn again that what people value is being able to see. That the outside of that building as they drive down the street, as opposed to what's still in it, right? It may, it may give you the, the sense that a lot of people would vote for being able to see the outside of that building as they drive down the street. But have a, something completely new and a lot less expensive to maintain year after year and operate year after year. That, that they might actually prefer that, that option, right? As opposed to, um, you know. Trying to keep more of the building, uh, up to, up to all of it, right? That, that it may seem like something that's not ideal and maybe very expensive. Uh, but if you compare what Westerman put together, i- it's not that far out of the range of the other things, other options that they cost it out. And so that's part of the reason we would like to leave it in there because it, it allows you to basically have whatever type of rec community center you want. And still be able to see the, the outside of that building as you drive down the street and potentially even keep parts of it. That you still use on the inside, right? That, that if, if we go with the theory that you have to keep. It up to the, the interior hallways in order to do that, right? You're still actually keeping some of the historic spaces that people can experience. And then getting a building that is much easier to use, much cheaper to operate, much cheaper to maintain, much cheaper to heat and cool. Right? So that's part of the reason why we think that option is still worth considering, even if folks think that it's too hard to do. Um, because we.
On our survey that was improved, the gap that we used, partial we used, that sixty percent of the people voted for. That, that was in a.
Just so, just so I'm clear, we're talking about number six. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Option C. And, and, and that's the other thing that we think that the full or partial reservation that people voted for. Option C, and, and, and that's the other thing that we think that the full or partial reservation that people voted for. People were thinking option C, they were, some people were thinking option B, and some people were thinking option A. Right? And it may be that when it comes to a vote, you might, you might not get the amount that you need. For any one of those, or you might only get it for one, and we don't know which one of those is yet, because we haven't asked. And there's been a lot of talk over the years about what, you know, what option C represents. And, and so because there's been so much talk about that, we feel like there are people who, who like that option and still wanna visit it. It's very likely we find the very few people like and support that option, and then we could move on, but we don't know that yet.
John, what do you think if, if option A is X? What do you think option C is? X Y?
What do you mean if?
It's like, it's like cost, is it one point one times A, or is it one point?
The, I don't, I don't.
Like, according to like, no, I mean, relative to what Westerman said.
I don't think the Western numbers back out, I don't think we can answer that.
Okay, there was no problem.
Yeah, cuz it, there's a whole lot of things you could put behind there, and that, that's gonna, you know, like the one proposal that had. You know, hockey rink and an indoor soccer field, that's gonna be a lot different than, you know, if you're just adding a pool back there. Um, it's, it's, there's so many options, so it's hard to say how much more that would cost. Till you know what's, what it's gonna be in it, and that's, the survey is gonna help us get to that.
And, and just a, a, another point of information, option D is mothballing, is that correct?
Right, right. We, we, we were asked not to use that term.
I, I understand.
Ago, so we didn't, we didn't wanna use it. Um, yeah. And, and we understand that mothballing is not gonna cost everybody an average of fifteen hundred dollars a year, but we, we wanted to be consistent with what the options were, so we weren't. We weren't, we weren't unduly biasing the responses.
Okay.
Alright, so unfortunately, the library is closed, so probably good news for consultants. Is there anything really? It's shattering that someone wanted to say that they didn't get to say, I'm prepared B and C just from like anyone, um. That's for Redda who is dancing at this. It, it's, you know, selecting sections and you keep, I mean, to an average person, basically B and C, they are essentially the same. You take part, you build something new, so that's, that could, I, I don't know what your take, uh, is on that. Because C, you keep outside of the main building, like, what does that even mean? What's the depth of the main building? What's like putting the shell or only the face of it? Uh, or you're putting like the, the, the around there, or you take the inside out? Or you take like the, the front part, but, and then you mentioned you could keep like the inside of it, the historic part of it? What does it even mean, the outside of the building?
Like, if you think about facadeism, and you, we don't wanna use all the different words, I guess, right? But when you look at the construction of anything, whether it's something in London, or you know, if it's a townhouse in Newark. With the facadeism, there's tremendous amount of metal that's behind to hold these structures up that. Take away space, like right behind the building. So I don't think most citizens or residents would actually know that, you know, unless they've been to all the meetings that we've had in the last year and a half. You know, and, and that, I, I think, I think you have something, you know, I think it is confusing, and I think that people probably don't realize option B is. You know, take, using only part of the one wing and keeping another one, or putting glass and metal behind, or. You know, like, if you put the pool in the back and putting on a roof, I mean. That's where it's, I, I just don't see an average person seeing that difference either, B and C.
Let me chime in there, because you guys saw my notes this weekend I sent to everybody. Um, my view is very simple. Again, I try to keep it simple, because the average person who's listening to this is probably like, oh my God, they're so confused, they're like. What are these people talking about? Because the average person doesn't understand the details of construction, structural engineering, and they, all they know is this. The building that they drive by on Stewart Avenue, and they're trying to visualize what to do with this building and what we can do with it. So again, for me, again, I'm just speaking for myself, not for anybody else. Option A, option B, and then you eliminate option C, and you go to option D, which then becomes option C. And you do three options that make sense, that are affordable, and there, there's a lot of things you can do within those three worlds. But to me, it, having B and C is exactly what Jess said. It's confusing, and they almost mimic each other. You know, and my personal view, you've heard it on, on that information I sent over to everybody. I think facadeism is a non, it's a nonstarter for me, because the amount of work and money it's gonna take to do facadeism of that building. Facetism was designed generally for inner cities and historical neighborhoods, where they had the face of a building that they had to restore and keep there for historical purposes. But they wanted to do a new building behind it, because the building that was there was, completely didn't work for their needs. But they had to save the face of the building for historical purposes. That is the real reason why facadeism was initially designed, was for that specific purpose, not a freestanding building in the middle of Long Island or Garden City. Now, if the building itself, you know, if you wanted to save St. Paul's, the front of St. Paul's, and the rest of the building was falling down. And it was rotten, and it was just falling down anyway, yeah, that actually would make sense to save the front of the building and not down the rest of the building. If the building as a whole was not in good structural shape and it needed to be taken down anyway. That's not the case with St. Paul's. St. Co- St. Paul's, the majority of that building is as solid as a rock. It was built with unbelievable engineering, European engineering, okay, and it doesn't need to be taken down. Can it be, can it be, no, can I finish, Mary? Can it be modified?
We have staff upstairs.
I know it is. Okay, can I get ten more seconds? Alright, the reality is, you can, you can do whatever you decide you wanna do with this building, but to me, facadeism is way too expensive. Doesn't need to be done and shouldn't be put in this survey. Now, have a night nice. Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks so much for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, man.
Bye.